Welcome, Mr. Lessin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is this what you sent earlier today in the email?
I did.
Okay.
I did. So, my name is Ben Lessin. I'm the CEO of Community Care Alliance. I'd like to introduce also Michelle Taylor, who is a Vice President of our Social Health Services, which encompasses homeless services, employment and training, our Family Support Center, our Youth Center, our Recovery Center. Am I leaving out?
I'm sure there's a couple more.
There's probably a couple more. I wasn't quite clear on what the agenda was tonight. So, what we did was, what we've given you are a couple of things. One is a review of the ESG or Emergency Services Grant that we have collaborated with the city on over the last year. And we wanted to give you some up-to-date information in terms of this specific grant, which we have implemented. And the other thing that I've given you is our most recent annual report, which gives you a snapshot, particularly in 2020, of our activities. And I believe I have sent all of you, which you should have in your email, also a report that we refer to as Highlights and Outcomes, which gets you into, sort of gets you into the weeds in terms of our programs across the organization. We're a comprehensive health and human service organization that is based in Wunsakit. We have been around since 1891. We are really an array of a few organizations. One that was originally a family service organization, a community action agency, and also a community mental health center. So, we have quite an array of services. We also provide literacy and education services, which is also under Michelle's division. Community Care Alliance is somewhat unique in the state in that we have this scope of services, if you will. Many other organizations you will see being more single-service organizations, addiction-related, mental health-related, family service-related, and so forth. And so, really, the whole approach here in terms of our organization is to be as comprehensive as possible. Myself and Michelle have had many years of experience here in the city, you know, of a forty-plus-year career. I've spent thirty-two of those years working here in Wunsakit, both in the eighties and early nineties, and then from 2000 on. So, we're pretty familiar with the populations that we serve here. We're deeply committed to this city and to working with the populations here in the city. Michelle has been here about twenty-five years. And she, her background is, began behavioral health services. And she, last year, subsequent to one of our senior staff, Nancy Parry, who played a pretty significant role here in the city, subsequent to her retirement, Michelle stepped into her role for this division. Just want to also say, because of the scope of services we have, we have a couple of colleagues here. One is Tom Martin, who is the Director of the Division of Behavioral Health at BHDDH, as well as Michelle Brophy, who also works at BHDDH. And Michelle is, Michelle has been with the department for several years. But Michelle is probably, has the most expertise in the state around homelessness in particular. And has a sort of the big picture, if you will, in terms of how homelessness is occurring in the state and what the needs are of the population that we serve there. So, how would you like to proceed here, Mr. President? Do you all have questions you would like to ask relative to ESG or anything else?
I think we will have questions. I just have one question, and it's just a technical thing. But on the report that you handed us today and the one that you sent us earlier this morning,
Yep.
Under the median family income, it says for the year 2000. Is that just a typo, or is that actually the median family income in 2000?
That was taken from the Kids Count resource, and that's the latest figure they were able to provide us on its site.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So, I will open the floor to the council. If anyone has questions for any of the members of Community Care Alliance, I'll allow that to happen. Any questions, Council President, Councilman Canoyer?
So, again, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And as the council president indicated, we have a meeting back in mid-October to begin, not begin, but in part to have discussions about the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And during that meeting, I was here in Harris Hall, there was discussions about some of the potential calls that funding, including homeless shelters and stuff of that nature. And at that point, the mayor had indicated we should probably have some further conversations with a number of the agencies throughout the city. And they had mentioned CCA is probably the best starting point since you are one of the largest. So, thank you for coming. As you know, when we did the first allocation, the first tranche that we allocated was roughly fourteen million. We allocated approximately thirteen million. And it was quite a bit of people over the fact that there were no specific line items for homeless shelters or stuff of that nature. It was, a lot of it was geared towards infrastructure and some of the other perceived needs of the city, the community, of our age, if you will. So, at that, and we also talked about that night that there was, earlier, I think you noted here, the CARES, I think you called it the Emergency Solutions Grant or something, CARES Act, whatever. There was an allocation that was provided to you folks, because obviously, the city does look to organizations like yourself to assist in these areas. So, there was certainly a level of funding, and I'm sure it's never enough. We're all in the same boat. It's never enough on all sides of the table. So, a couple of questions. Number one, how many physical locations does CCA have here in the city of Wunsakit? You don't need to put you right on the spot.
Sure. Five, I'm counting. Eight Hundred Punton Street, Two Forty-Five Main Street, Fifty-Five Cummings Way, Eight Court Street. We have our shelter located at One Thirty-four, One Thirty-six Sales Street. That's a two-triple-duct. And our visitation center on Orchard Street.
Okay. And how many of those, do you actually own those outright, or are they leased? Was it a mixed bag?
We own them all.
Okay.
And the only building that we don't own that I didn't add is One Eighty-one Cumberland Street, which historically was the original site of the Community Mental Health Center here in Wunsakit, which is owned by the state and has gone into disrepair as a result. And we have been fighting to have it refurbished, if you will. But we have a very, very small footprint there now. But I had to take staff out of that building because the roof had not been repaired in several years, and there was internal damage.
Okay. And at One Thirty-six Sales, that's where you provide some shelter? So, how many does that accommodate? Let me rephrase that. How many is it able to accommodate? What's the maximum?
At any point in time, we have anywhere from forty to fifty adults and children living there.
Forty to fifty, okay.
Yeah.
That's, by the way, that's, by purpose, several years ago, we established that as a family shelter. And the reason that we did that was because of the need relative to homeless families, because kids get split, basically get placed by DCYF, and we were trying to prevent that as much as possible. So, it's by focus, a family shelter. There are seven beds for single women. But that's the primary nature of the shelter.
Okay. And are you, and there's a couple other shelters in the city outside of what you guys manage?
One other.
One other, Hardest Community.
Hardest, yeah. And does the Sojourn House do any sheltering?
Sojourn House is...
And if you don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Sojourn House has been specific to domestic violence.
Yeah.
So, their category is very narrow in terms of the folks that they bring into their shelter. But I'm all, and they do some supportive housing too. I'm not even sure, are they still operating the shelter in Oklahoma?
I'm not certain. And it's privileged information. They don't give out the location of their shelter because of the...
But I do believe they do some supportive housing.
Yeah. Okay. And I think, again, correct me if I'm wrong, just trying to get the lay of the land here so that we're all kind of on the same page. So, we do, the city does provide through CDVG funding and emergency solutions grants and all that, the whole. And I refer to it broadly as CDVG, but I know there's various elements. But you tell me if you think I'm far off. But my information is that we do provide, Community Care Alliance, with about a hundred-plus-thousand, between, I had a hundred-and-fifteen thousand, a hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, one-eighteen, one-eighteen in the last three or four years combined, emergency solutions grants for rapidly housing, shelter operations, some housing stabilization. So, it's like a hundred-and-fifteen thousand, I think it's sixteen, seventeen. Similar-type grant, seventeen acres, like ninety-three thousand and one-eighteen. Anyways, does that make sense that through the, again, broadly speaking, the CDVG funding process?
So, probably, so, in, prior to this year, I want to say 2019, 2020 or so, there was some CDVG funding. Prior to that, there has been little to none, okay? And I can pretty much attest to that because Mayor Menard was in office during 2000. And there was an allocation every year. The city had provided an allocation every year to then what was referred to as Wunsakit Shelter Community Action. And that allocation stopped in 2000. And then after that, there was very little that was provided. We got the, you know, Aaron CDVG grant mostly for some infrastructure kinds of things, you know, repair Eight Court Street or to do a sound change or those sorts of things. But nothing in terms of supporting the shelter. The shelter is supported by, in excess of about eight-plus funding sources. So, we basically have, over the years, had to piece this operation together through various donations as well as various federal funding sources and so forth.
Okay. And do you guys get anything from the state? Any state funding?
We get state funding that passes through the state. It's actually federal funding.
Okay. As well as if the CDVG for us passes through the city.
Right. So, we get, it was at one time referred to as McKinney, McKinney Vento Funding. It's got a different name now. I think it's called Heart. And that's federal funding that passes through the state and is applied to our shelter. We also, because we're a community action agency, we have access to, as does every community action agency, an allocation for community service block grant funding. Those allocations historically have been used by cap agencies to support administrative services. We've always put those funds into direct services for the most part in terms of the shelter as well as our Family Support Center.
Okay. And in terms of, and I recognize, before I even asked the question, the fastened circumstances change daily, monthly, annually. But in terms of outcomes, there was, I think, one of the things you sent us, there was a gentleman that ended up, I think he works with the city now. You guys were able to help over a period of time. And now, I think he works with the Hyrum apartment. And that was a sort of a story. Are there, is, do you have many of those stories?
So, let me, and I'm going to let Michelle talk because this is Michelle's program. But I will say to you, when someone, when we have a family entering our shelter, our objective is that the next stop for that family is permanent housing. We are not into moving people from place to place. We're not into having people stay in our facilities long-term, if you will. We believe that, you know, folks need to be stable, particularly when you're dealing with kids. And we need to work with them. And we work real hard with them in terms of not only permanent housing, but stable income. Sometimes that income is disability-oriented because they have healthcare issues. And we also work with people in terms of getting back to work or getting to work, if you will, through our employment and training program. So, we take a sort of a comprehensive approach in terms of how we address these sorts of issues. But Michelle may want to comment on that a little bit more.
So, by the way, I was born and raised in Wunsakit. Je m'appelle Anne. My first language was French. So, the city means a lot to me, and the people that we serve mean a great deal to me. You know, the outcomes are varied. One of the things that we've seen in the way that we were able to use the Emergency Solutions Grant funding that we received last year was our ability to put eighty people, adults and children, in what we call the Motel Voucher Program. So, we were able to do that starting in December of 2020, and then through May of 2021, when that was transitioned, the state decided to put all of the funds through the coalition to end homelessness. So, until then, we handled those eighty people. We were providing case management support to those individuals. And what we saw happening with those folks is that we saw reduced substance use. We were able to get those people into detox. We were able to connect them with our Behavioral Health Services. People who had been doing sex work to survive so they would have a place to sleep at night no longer needed to do that, and they stopped doing it. We had families that were reunited and brought back together. They were able to get their children back. Or some gave birth in a motel and then were able to keep their children because they were able to provide a stable environment. And we were wrapping around family support services to those folks. So, you know, it's hard to sort of give you a number, but I have to tell you that there is a difference, right? One of the things that we've been able to do is, separate from this funding, we provide through in-kind donations, we created Safe Haven, a drop-in center. So, this is located at Two Forty-five Main Street. And we're providing a lot of the wraparound supportive services for our folks staying in motels. So, what that means is that we're able to connect them with a wide array of services. That includes working with Dr. Nathan Paul from Thunder Mess, who comes once a week, every week, and meets with our clients on-site there. And I have to tell you, people's health has started to improve. When you're homeless and you're diabetic, you're not going to be able to take your insulin when you're supposed to. You're not going to be healthy. You're not going to be able to adhere to all of the things that you need to do. And so, does it make a difference in people's lives? Absolutely. And additionally, you know, the other part of that grant was that we were expected to provide rental assistance. So, to seventeen families, we were able to provide one-time assistance. They'd gotten, you know, into a bad place. A lot of it was, this was early in COVID, and so, they were struggling. And then we have another fifteen households that we are supporting through ESG funds. We're able to provide what's called moderate rental assistance. So, our plan is for these families to be able to provide up to two years of rental support. Now, obviously, we need to close that gap. They're living in places they really can't afford. During that time, we're helping them to apply for subsidized housing. We're helping them to get jobs. We're helping them to apply for disability incomes. So, it really depends. Each person gets a, you know, an individualized plan. But that is why, you know, there are remaining funds. We haven't sent them down because if we did, we would not be able to support those people on an ongoing basis. So, that's where we're at. I mean, we, you know, we were able to assist a pretty significant number of people in a pretty, you know, speedy amount of time with the funding that was provided. And it was appreciated. It made a big difference in the lives of the people that we've been serving.
Okay. Last question, Hardest. And you mentioned the rental assistance. So, we, during the eviction moratorium that the government had in place, they were providing, did we provide any additional funds outside the eight-hundred-nine-hundred-thousand I think that's referenced here? Was there additional funding? Did we get you folks involved and try to deal with any of that? The funding that was available to assist people with rent during the eviction moratorium? Does that ring any bells?
So, the rent relief R.I. went to Rhode Island Housing. It started with Crossroads and then Rhode Island Housing. Both organizations have struggled to get those dollars out the door. We did, through the cap agencies, provide some assistance to clients in completing the applications. But we've never been responsible for being able to deliver those dollars, so.
Thank you very much.
And Councilman Canoyer, you don't apologize. You were asking a very good question, so thank you. Is there anyone else that would have questions? Or CCA friends?
Council President.
Councilman Moore.
Just want to understand, when you talk about the scale of all of the services you provide, how many communities do you cover in providing the services you do?
So, Wunsakit is our home base, but we cover also Northern Rhode Island. And we cover Northern Rhode Island by virtue of the fact that we are a community mental health center as well. And so, historically, the Community Mental Health Center has always covered the five towns. And so, we do cover this part of the region, if you will. We provide also some specialty services outside of Northern Rhode Island. So, we provide a, we're a subcontractor to Horizon Healthcare Partners for a program in East Providence called BH Link, which is a twenty-four-seven, basically urgent care center, psychiatric urgent care center, if you will. People can come into the center at any day, at any point of the day or night. We have an alternative to hospitalization program that's based in Providence. And we have a substance use residential program in Pawtucket and one in Johnston. So, but we are not, we are not looking for, actively looking for clients, if you will. We're not actively looking to sort of set up camp in those cities. We're providing very specialized services because we can or we've been asked to. BH Link in particular is one of our acute services. And one of the things this organization has done for fifty years or so has been to serve as a crisis intervention resource for folks with mental health crises and so forth. So, that's one of our, that's in our real house, if you will, with some expertise that we have. And we were, we're a part of Horizon Healthcare Partners, and we're asked to develop and design that program.
Is it your agency that also, or a part of your agency that deals with assisting the police department with some intervention when you have problems?
We don't have an active contract with the police department, but we work with the police department almost every day. So, we have a commission that rides with the police department. And we also very actively go out with the police department when they ask us to. And we get called pretty regularly if they've got a situation that they feel as if needs someone with a mental health background there.
And beyond the issue of homelessness and placement and rent assistance, does the rent assistance extend to pay permanent rental assistance or some kind of, let me give you more definition of it. In your tax year, it refers mainly to four organizations over which you have controlling interest to provide housing for disabled and elderly. It doesn't seem to show that you're the actual owner, but it says you have a controlling interest in it.
So...
And three of them are located in Wunsakit that are, say, they house disabled and elderly.
He's talking about our HUD Corporation.
HUD?
It's a HUD Corporation. So, it's, the funding for those, for that housing is all HUD-related. And we have a management company that oversees that operation.
So, you manage the tenancy and the occupancy through referring?
Correct. We refer all of...
Clients that would best be served in those housing situations?
Correct. Everyone in those, every client, almost every client in that housing, in those housing circumstances, receives supportive, some kind of supportive services from us. Usually clinical services, psychiatry, nursing, case management, other clinical services.
But the other party still retains ownership of the property?
Manages it, correct, yes. That's a separate, that's a separate subcorporation.
A subcorporation, or it's just independent?
No, it's a separate subcorporation.
Okay. That is controlled by CCA?
A board of CCA, yes. It's a, it's a, it's a subcorporation of CCA, but it's got an independent board. The board, our Board of Directors doesn't oversee, if you will.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. You know, we've asked a great number of questions.
Yes.
They were very informative. Thank you.
Councilman Sucey?
Yeah, just an observation. At the end of your summary, the summary that you were receiving calls daily from individuals rated from teens and elderly who are homeless or teetering on the brink of homelessness. The volume is like any, nothing you've ever seen. And I just, that struck me because, first of all, the case that, this is not something that's petering away or getting better. It's, we're seeing statewide in Wunsakit, unfortunately, this real urgency. And I think that's a case for, if we, you know, if we could ever do anything more, it would be a great time to do that, I imagine.
Our concern is that the need is present right now. And our other concern is the month that we're in. And so, you know, we, we had two people die last year from exposure locally. And so, you know, our immediate focus is, and we're working with, we're working with the state on this, is to try to bring other resources into the community so that we can basically create some more shelter options. You know, we have to get people indoors as soon as possible. Right now, we're talking with a local church that is willing to work with us in terms of, in terms of creating some additional shelter space. But, you know, we're very concerned about that. And, you know, we, a good number of the people that we work with, particularly through Michelle's Safe Haven Program, we created Safe Haven last year as a drop-in center because people did not have a place during the day where they could come in to get warm and where they could come in to get other kinds of supplies and so forth. And so, these are often the people that, you know, are struggling with addiction and the police encounter. And the police, you know, generally have no solutions for them, if you will. And so, so we created this, we created this space for them. And so, winter turns into spring and summer, and there's a need for this kind of drop-in center for folks to, you know, come out of the sun, if you will. But we are looking at, on a daily basis, probably forty or more people passing through this drop-in center. And the majority of them have pretty significant behavioral health and addiction issues. And, you know, I'm sorry to share with you tonight, but, you know, Michelle and I just came from that site. One of them overdosed and kind of snuck back into the building and overdosed in one of our bathrooms. And we had staff come in, come back in to identify the person and so forth. So, I think the thing I'm going to leave you with is that there is... So I think the thing I'm gonna leave you with is, is that there is, there is a need right now in terms of trying to create safety for, for, for this population or, or we're gonna see more of this. And, you know, we don't really wanna see more of this, you know? As Michelle said, you know, if we can engage folks, we have a better chance of getting them to treatment. We have a better chance of getting them to detox. We have a better chance of getting them out of, you know, sex work and other unhealthy things that they're involved in to, to try to survive.
I'll say. I, I just wanted to, looking at your brochure or the outcomes flyer that you sent us, it talks about the Wilson House and the Jellison House. Are those some of the facilities that Councilman Moore was referring to that are?
Wilson House, Pawtucket, Jellison House, Johnston.
And those are under that separate subcorporation?
No, they're not. They're under community care.
Oh, they are?
They are under community care lines.
Oh, okay. All right. And do you, you talked about five other communities or five communities in total that comprise Northern Rhode Island. Do you receive assistance from other communities through their grant programs or anything like that?
We received some assistance through Cumberland, correct?
Yes.
For literacy?
Yes.
For literacy?
Yes.
Anything for homelessness?
No.
So the only community that is supporting or trying to eradicate homelessness is Wensocket?
Through, through this ESG grant and, and through the most recent CBGT, CBGT grants, correct?
How many employees does CCA have?
Five hundred.
Five hundred? Wow. So you didn't get away with the mandate for vaccination then, huh?
We didn't get away with it?
I mean, you, you were over the hundred employee limit for the.
Yeah, we mandated, we, we mandated vaccinations probably earlier than other folks. We took a hit for it, but we decided that given the populations we work with and the risk we were putting staff at, we really needed to, to mandate vaccination. Yeah.
Very good. Any other question, Councilman Gillette?
And Mr. President, you started on a similar line that I wanted to talk on. You say that you work with five communities, correct?
We, Lincoln, Hamilton, Wensocket, North Smithfield and Burrville.
Wensocket being the largest and the most populated of those communities?
Correct. And being where, where this organization started.
In trying to solve the different problems of people, do you find yourself finding a person in Cumberland or whatever other community, if you can't find services in that community for that person or whether it be a man or a woman, you'll find, bring, you'll find yourself bringing them into the city of Wensocket, which can probably better serve that community?
Not necessarily. We don't, we don't actively bring people into, into Wensocket. We encounter people who may not be from Wensocket who have moved here themselves, but we do not actively bring people into Wensocket. We provide mostly in those other communities. We do a lot of work, behavioral health work. We work with local police departments. We work with school systems. We have staff embedded in almost every, every community in terms of, in terms of assistance and so forth. But we don't, we don't, we don't actively bring people into Wensocket.
Do you strive to get more housing and places for your clients to live in other communities as much as you do in the city of Wensocket?
We absolutely do. We, in our, in our shelter program in particular, several years ago, one of the things that we discovered was that the length of stay was increasing. And we tried to keep the length of stay at about four to five months tops, if you will. At one point in time, it was higher than that. And so one of the things that we did was we actively started working with or seeking resources in other communities, particularly housing, housing resources. So we've gone to, we've utilized Section Eight in other communities. We've utilized housing authorities in other communities. We're, you know, our philosophy is particularly where homelessness is concerned. If there isn't a resource, if the person isn't, if, if, if there's not a resource locally, if you will, available, you know, and they need to go to Cumberland, we'll train, we'll, we'll place them in Cumberland. If, and we've placed folks as far away as South County in some cases. So, you know, our first priority, particularly where kids and families are concerned, is to get a permanent roof over their heads. And then, and then we figure out what else do they need once they get to another community. And we have, we have relationships across the state. So we will work with other, whether it's community mental health center or cap agency or whatever, to make sure that they get the resources. So we, we do not, you know, actively try and keep everyone local.
Have you gone to other city councils and requested that they too, like Wensocket, put funds in there, if they get CBGT monies coming from there or just playing out of their tax structure?
We have, we have, we have not. We, we pay close attention to what's going on in other communities. If there are, if there are, and I think Cumberland is an example, if there's an opportunity to access those resources for a particular service, we will reach out to that community. But we don't actively go and solicit, if you will, those resources. And, you know, the other thing that I will say is, you know, we're very happy to be collaborating with, with the city around this ESG grant and so forth, but we do not solicit those funds. So we think that we've done a, a good job with them, but, you know, that was not something that we actively sought.
You know, I just want to add that the vast majority of the people that we are working with who are homeless right now are, are from Wensocket. I mean, I would say about 95% of the people that we're dealing with are predominantly from Wensocket. Even prior to COVID, when, you know, there was more shelter space, we would have opportunities to move people to a Providence shelter and they would refuse it. They would rather stay outside than move to outside of the city. The reality is when you are homeless and you have nothing, you're, the, all that you have is your community, right? So for people who are feeling particularly disenfranchised, we can't move them out of the city often because they don't want to. This isn't their home. This is where they've always lived. And so we often will provide, you know, opportunities to move out elsewhere because you could get shelter here, you could get this resource. I want to stay here. This is where I know people, you know, they, the homeless population does form relationships with one another. They support each other and they look out for each other. This is where they feel comfortable. This is where they feel safe. And so saying, I'm gonna move you to Providence because, or to, you know, East Grange, whatever, because there's a shelter there, they're not going there. They want to stay here. This is their city. And that's, that's one of the challenges that we deal with. You know, I, you saw me come in, like, you know, my hat and my scarf, because it's like, you know, too cold, I can't even fathom staying outside for longer than 10 minutes. But people are willing to brave that, to stay in their community here because that's, that's the way they are. So.
Do you find yourself trying to find housing for people who have come into the community from elsewhere?
I mean, it does happen. Yes, absolutely.
It does happen. And you ask them if they want to go back to their community and you help them there or if they want to stay here or things like that?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, you know, we.
I'm not in your industry. I'd probably send a question to answer for you, but I just don't know what you're doing yet.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at what this person's needs are and, and where they identify as home, right? Where they want to be. And then we will work with them to move them there. Now, obviously, some people may not know what their options are. So we're gonna explore all of the options and say, you know, there's an apartment in Cumberland, there's a place in Burrville, you know, here, here are some of your options. And then it's up to people to say yea or nay, and then we'll support them in that. We don't always agree with everybody's choices, but we are going to honor them because, you know, that's.
I mean, from our perspective, if, you know, if someone is homeless, if someone is in need, that's what we're going, that's what we're going to address. As Michelle said, you know, we will give them options. We will suggest options to them, but we can't, you know, we're under no authority to make anyone do anything. And, you know, our first, our first consideration is, is really safety. And that's what we're trying to, that's part of what we're trying to achieve here. So. Last thing I'll, I'll just say about this emergency solutions grant, and it's indicative of, of other things that we do, is, is that, you know, when we receive these kinds of resources and funds, because of our scope of services, we're able to bring, we're able to leverage other things. We, other funds and resources. We estimate that we've brought probably $90,000 conservatively in addition to the ESG funds just through other resources and services, just through, through fundraising and so forth. I mean, if, you know, we're, we have actively solicited folks in terms of, you know, trying to, trying to, if they're gonna, if they're going to, to, to use their money in philanthropic ways, we'd rather them focus on things that really people need and, and will be helpful in terms of their, their safety. So, so we do that. And, and I think that that's one of the advantage of, advantages of an organization like ours.
I just wanted to add what's kind of unprecedented in what we're seeing. We'll get a phone call from someone who's in the hospital. He's just had hernia surgery and he's being discharged to, to, to the street. And there's no room in a shelter. There's no place to put him. And all we can say is here's the phone number for coordinated entry system, call them. But they have a waitlist of over a thousand people, so he's not getting in. We've had women with babies leaving domestic violence situations. There's no place for them. We have people living in their car with their children because there is no place for them. So we're not, we're talking about a, a population of individuals that previously we would not have seen be homeless. I mean, this is beyond the scope, I think, that any of us have seen, at least in my 24 years here at CCA.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And.
Council President?
Yeah, just before you, just give me one second. I just want to, Mr. Lessing has, has extended an invitation that if any of the council would like to make an appointment to go see their facilities, you're welcome to reach out.
Please reach out to me.
To his secretary. And then they'll coordinate a, a walkthrough for some of their facilities. So I, I didn't want to have you walk away without extending that ungyvered.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Appreciate that.
And Ms. Plais?
Can I just add, so about six weeks ago, I, I hosted a roundtable discussion with some of the agencies that we've seen in the CCA, funders, has gene from new beginnings. And, and one of the things that we're, we went around the table, the question was, what is the stumbling block of helping these individuals? The, the sentiment that was said over and over again was funding. So we heard that, that they needed funding, but we needed to know more. What do you need the funding for? Today, we got a, a, a lot of information from Mr. Lessing's office with, with, with numbers that we'll have to digest. And I apologize, I just, I haven't had time to look at that whole document in, you know, in depth, but I just wonder if you have. But I do know about a month ago, before our meeting, Governor McKee announced that $5 million was allocated to agencies in the state for homeless, winter homeless sheltering. I do know that Harvest Community Church did receive $49,000 and that's to supplement beds for approximately 20 to 22 men in that shelter. Harvest Community Church does, has an amazing program. Thing about Harvest Community Church is they only operate from November through April. So six months out of the year, they're doing a phenomenal jo, a phenomenal job to take care of homeless men. CCA received $919,000 of that $5 million. So Wensocket received approximately $1 million of funding for homeless sheltering, which is great. And it, it'll be good to find out how the money is going to be used. The explanation that I did get from the Department of the Demonstration was some of the money was going to be used for 11 hotel rooms for individuals and families for winter sheltering. And then there's a second prong of the process for 40 rooms to provide emergency shelter and arrange of comprehensive, comprehensive services 24 to 7. And I did ask about that second prong and I don't have a clear understanding. And maybe Michelle or, or Ben can explain how, how the rest of the money is going to be used for the, for that facility.
So we, we have received an allocation which we're working through now for, for winter shelter. I referenced a, a local church that we're working with. And that's, and that will be utilized for this particular, for this particular operation. We are working on two other shelter resources. Do you want to talk about those?
Sure. So, did you want, um, yes. Oh, you want me to shout your name?
So we are also looking at identifying a shelter particularly for youth that we would link with our youth center. So right now, there are probably at least 15 to 20 youth who are homeless and that we are aware of. And we are looking to connect them with our youth center. So co-locate a shelter and a drop-in center, which focuses on employment services, but also a lot of the same sort of connections to behavioral health and other supports that we provide to, to our youth. You know, I think the other challenge, and if you remember, the other problem that we talked about was in addition to the funding, is that we need a facility. And so one of the challenges that we've had, both at the city level and the state level, was identifying a property that would be appropriate for housing a large number of people, anywhere from 20 to 40 individuals, to be able to get everyone off of the street. So I think that, you know, that has been a particular challenge in terms of, we've been very fortunate that we have a good relationship with a church who was willing to make some pretty significant sacrifices in how they use their space in order to be able to open this up. The other challenge with winter shelter, the harvest shelter doesn't, they do an exceptional job, but they're funded to operate from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, which means that those guys are out on the street for the balance of the day. We were very lucky. The reason we got so much funding was that we plan to provide wraparound services. So we will provide 24/7 services for all duration through the end of April. And we would be hoping to extend that because the reality is being homeless in the summer isn't a whole lot better than being homeless in the winter, honestly. You cannot help people to be sober. There's no, there's no benefit to being sober if you are homeless, honestly. Why, you're miserable, you're, you know, like, the only way that we're gonna help people and change their lives is to put a roof over their head. And so we do function from a housing first model because essentially, no one's going to be well if they don't have a place to put their head at night.
But, but aside from staffing, probably our single greatest challenge is finding the appropriate facilities. This is not an easy thing to do. It's not an e, it's not an easy thing for a neighborhood to accept, if you will. And so we have to be very careful about how we, how we go about it.
Well, if I may.
Councilman Wood?
It, it seems to me that in dealing with homeless, they're living, when they're living in a residential temporary facility, it's in Wensocket, Pawtucket, Central Falls, Providence, Lakeview, Newport, Knott, Smithfield, Cumberland, Lincoln, Johnston, Grand Canyon, West Wall and East Grange, Marigansett. Why is that?
We try to, we try to locate shelter resources close to where people are and close to where they want to be.
Well, they want to be closest to the services they need.
Right.
The food they need.
Right.
But doesn't that necessarily then make Wensocket, Pawtucket, Providence, attractive cities for anybody that's driving around in their car, down on their lot, has a substance abuse problem, family broken up, loss of a job? Where are you gonna go, Wensocket?
Yeah, our experience, our experience is, is that that, that does not happen very often. Our experience.
We don't go to Smithfield.
Our experience is, is that the people that we're working with that come through our drop-in center are people that are, many times have, have been born and raised here and want to stay here. And so when, whenever we endeavorish to, to, to begin one of these resources or develop one of these resources, we try to do so to your point, you know, near the services that they require. So when we develop this next resource, it's going to be within three quarters of a mile, basically, of the resources that they need, whether it's healthcare, employment and training or. or a variety of other resources too. So.
It, it's not, I'm not saying this to criticize you or what you do because you have to do it within a limited space based upon what you're identifying as how the system works. Um, but between Community Care Alliance and Thunder Mist, our former business rehabilitation of the Clinton Street, Social Street area has turned into the epicenter of social services in Northern Rhode Island, occupied by Community Care Alliance and Thunder Mist Health. Um, because that's where you have to go and get the services and then surrounded by assisted housing and your client help. And so it, it, it basically has used up what was intended, intended to be retail facility. Um, that started out as banking, retail, some modest, um, light industrial, and turned it into a social service hub. Now, I don't know that that's a bad thing for a community, but it is gradually becoming the only thing in the community. Am I overstating that?
Well, I guess, I would, I guess I would ask, number one, what's, what's the alternative, particularly for us in terms of trying to, trying to develop these services that are needed for the people that we serve?
Well, the alternative, I guess, is for the state to recognize it. And that's the point I get to every time is, for instance, mention was made of, of the eviction. Um. Sorry, moratorium.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, and the fact that the state was supposed to assist. I had the tenants and the landlords by giving them the money in lieu of the rent that wasn't getting paid because somebody was unemployed, unable to pay their rent, but they were not allowed to evict them. So the money was supposed to go to the tenant or to the landlord. I think they ended up saying it was going to go to the tenant and then the landlords complained that the tenants never got it to them. But the fact was, the state was the one that turned it over to Rallin Housing, who, I don't know, have they figured out yet how to disperse those funds? Or is the application process so convoluted that they can't manage to cut a check?
So I will tell you, we don't disagree with that. We don't disagree with your, your statement. In fact, the, the network of cap agencies across the state basically went to the governor and said, give us the money. You know, we do this work every day in different ways. We will figure out how to make it, how it will get to the communities it needs to get to and so forth. So I think what has happened in this state is that Rhode Island Housing has become sort of the default around these sorts of, um, housing issues and supportive issues and so forth. We don't always agree with that. We've, we've worked with Rhode Island Housing. But, um, but particularly where this community.
Are you ever at odds with one another or in competition with one another for controlling segments of, of housing support that you are not able to do best because they're in your way bureaucratically or?
We've, we've had some, we've been at odds with them before. There's no, there's no question about that. We've taken some issues with them, particularly in terms of, in terms of their contracts and their payment systems and those sorts of things. Um, but I think the biggest thing, and to your point about this money, is that it has taken them an inordinate amount of time to figure out how to get the money to local communities. And they had to go out and hire, I believe, 25 or 30 staff to, to figure out how to do it and so forth, whereas they could have come to community action agencies that were designed for this kind of thing to disperse the, to disperse the funds. It's, it's, you know, part of what you get at is sort of how business, how social service or human services or business occurs in the state. And it's not the most efficient way. Um, and, um, you know, we, we are, we are of the opinion that any resources we can bring to Inwood Socket, we're going to try to bring to, we're going to try to bring to Inwood Socket. But we've also seen a lot of resources that have gone to other places where Inwood Socket could have used them. They go to other places other than Inwood Socket. So it's, it's a, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing issue for, for us, for sure. But, you know, I would, I would welcome from this council or from the mayor, you know, any conversations about how to better organize or locate human services in the city. Um, this is the first time I've heard anyone say this directly, at least to me, in terms of, in terms of, um, the use of buildings, um, downtown. You know, I, and Michelle in particular, you know, um, I hate the fact that we have so many sites. But in order to, to, to accomplish the work that we do, we need that number of sites. But if there were a way that we could work with the city to do more consolidation, you know, if there were a way that we could work with the city around economic development to support that effort as well as serving the people that we serve, we're all in.
Well, I, I guess my part, again, is not laying any blame at all on what you do. It's just, for my part, my concern with the state is only going to fail to recognize how such a population necessarily owes the median household income, um, owes the community, and owes the ability to pay taxes. And for the most part, the properties you operate in are all paying taxes, as are Thunder Mist. They pay taxes on those properties. So it's not as if the taxes aren't getting paid. But it's about the fact that there's less asset value in the properties in the city as a result of a low income and lower housing values and such. And the state, I don't think, gives sufficient recognition to, um, how much support we need in order to maintain such a ratio in the city of what are middle-income families that are trying to pay the bills for the city and those who are unable to. And on top of that, require services. And by the way, some of the services you provide aren't, I know, student-related and education-related, but, but only scratch the surface of some of the things that education is responsible for, related to mental health, socioeconomic relationship, family relationships and social services that the school system tries to provide too. Um, that, that they have, for some reason, got stuck with the burden of doing as well as health services, where in the past, it was supposed to just do education, but they do a whole lot more now. And I don't think there's enough recognition given by the state to take care of those.
We have, we have, we've played a role in terms of advocating for those resources so that we could support schools more. Um, you know, we think that those services should be supported by, by the state. There's no, there's no question about that. So, you know, um, you know, I don't think we are, I don't think we made your disagreement here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would, Mr. Lessing, Ms. Dayla, Mr. Martin, Ms. Europey, I'd like to thank you all for, um, taking this invitation to come in here tonight and explain your, um, work in the city and, and in Northern Rhode Island, as you say. Um, it's, it's enlightening to us because we don't always know everything that goes on. So thank you for being here and thank you for taking your time.
Do you mind if I say a few words?
I'm sorry?
Do you mind if I just say a couple of words?
Yes.
Yes, you might. Oh, my God, I'm past my bedtime. So I gotta, you know, at least have a reason to be up so late on a, on a Tuesday at 12:00.
Yeah.
So I'll just go. Um, so my name's Michelle Burkey. And we, I, I'm actually the chair of the State Continuum of Care. It's a, um, body, that's a volunteer body that works on housing and homelessness policies. So I've been doing this probably since 1993. And I have to say, I came here tonight to say thank you. Um, we don't get called in front of city councils to talk about homelessness and the solution. So I just want to take a brief minute to talk to you about what the Continuum of Care is, is actually about. Having Ben and Michelle come up and, and ask for support with shelters is something that we traditionally hadn't done until the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, we had about 90 people a year in need of winter shelters. We're up over 600 now. So we've had a lack of investment in housing across the entire state. Our neighbors in Connecticut and Massachusetts spend about $95 to $105 per capita on housing. Rhode Island is anywhere from $5 to $20 per capita. So there's a long history of, of not having enough housing. Um, people looking for apartments right now can't find them. So we've always talked about the solution. The solution to homelessness is housing, right? People don't have a house, so we get them a house. Permanent supportive housing is affordable housing coupled with services, um, that help people retain their housing. So when we go and, and talk to communities, we usually say we have the same goal. We want to end homelessness. You want to end homelessness. And I, I actually was in West Warwick talking to their business community because there's about 30 West Warwick residents who are living on the banks of the Pawtucket River, um, at any time. And, and their business community said, my God, we've built this beautiful gazebo. We have this business district. And your people experiencing homelessness, as I like to call them, they said, your homeless people are actually, you know, disrupting our businesses. And, and we came to this like aha moment when we realized we have the same goal. I want to get people off the streets and into permanent supportive housing. And they want people to get off the streets and not, you know, be disturbing the businesses. So I just think it's great that we're all working together. And I guess I would just offer up as the chair of the Continuum of Care, that we'll, we'll work with you. And I think the reason why you see CCA here tonight and other communities don't is because you're an entitlement community. You actually get emergency solution grants. It's Inwood Socket, Providence and Pawtucket. So they receive extra dollars. The rest of the communities, they rely on the state to divvy up the funds, um, and, and provide those awards. But I, I just wanted to let you know that we are here to support you. I usually don't get to come up and say that to people. And I guess I would also say, we know that permanent supportive housing is cost-effective. It helps people's health, their behavioral health. It helps the health of a community. And we know that it actually costs about $7,000 more a year to keep people homeless on the street than it does to keep them housed so to provide a rental subsidy and supportive services. So we have information. We've done pilots in Rhode Island. And if you ever want to, you know, meet with me earlier in the evening, if possible, then, you know, I can show you those documents. But you're so lucky. You have CCA, you have Thunder Mist, and you actually have Joe Gallic, who is amazing and known across the state for the work that they do in housing. So like, I actually feel like with the money coming in from the federal government into the state of Rhode Island, we have the opportunity to functionally end homelessness. And in my 20 some odd years of doing this, I can't say I had that optimism. So please, like, use us. Um, let us know what questions you have and how we can work together. And, um, I'm going to the Housing Resource Commission meeting tomorrow at 9:00. I will be with Rhode Island Housing. And I can talk to them about rent relief. We can talk to Commerce about getting, about getting more funds in for businesses. I'm, I'm happy to facilitate those conversations. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, uh, just take a second.
Sorry, she used the boy at night.
I do that all the time.
She cut me off. But I think there's about a point that's been made here today about the state and the lack of, you know, recognition on this issue. And this population in general has been underserved, underrepresented and misunderstood. And that's why we're here. Um, we, in our department of Behavioral Health, Michelle's the person who does, deals with homelessness. Um, so we have eyes wide open to that department to deal with it. But more importantly, I want to get to support of our colleagues here, Community Care Alliance. The state has had lots of success with Community Care Alliance in implementing very, um, innovative programs. And I just want to let you know that they have our support and anything that they're trying to do to implement here in Inwood Socket. They have done great work in all programs, and we just want to get behind them. We want to be part of the solution. We want to recognize the problem better. And if there's anything we can do collaboratively to get there, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you all for being here this evening. Um, that concludes our agenda for this evening.
Mr. Council President?
I do. Can I start something? Um. Five minutes? Less than five? Three. You guys can go.
Keep opposing the motion. Um, the plan director asked before the meeting started if she could steal three or four minutes to discuss and I go over to discuss a potential, um, grant request in connection with potentially, I keep on deciding the word potentially, acquiring a piece of property on Cumberland Hill Road that some folks may be familiar with. Used to be a restaurant. Um, a property in, in, in connection with access and the sale of the property.
So is that a motion to add to the agenda for discussion purposes only made by Councilman Knoya?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman War. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And?
I'll be in a moment.